All right, good evening, like to welcome you all to the Wednesday, October 8th, Middletown Planning Commission Meeting. We will open up by calling the roll, please.
Will Parsons.
Here.
A.J. Mintel.
Present.
Roger Daniel.
Here.
Nancy Griffith. David Cash.
Here.
Tara Ramsey. And Gabriel Shaneline.
All right, next if you would, please stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to the minutes, we have a few of our members who are absent. Do I have a motion to excuse these absences?
I'll make a motion to excuse the absences.
Second.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
And Mr. Cash?
Yes.
All right, that's real quick, point of housekeeping order, have the microphones been fixed from the previous weeks?
They were turned on twenty minutes ago.
Okay, seems that they might be a little spotty.
Nope.
I can talk loud.
Yeah, let's just talk loud.
Last week, we just had to project, so. All right. May the record also reflect that Ms. Ramsey is now present. She's now unexcused. All right, we have two sets of minutes from the August 13th and the September 10th Planning Commission Meetings. Does anyone have any requested changes or alterations that need to be made?
Nope.
Should we approve these separately? That'd be best. Okay, do I have a motion then to approve the minutes as they are?
I'll make the motion. I'll sec-
You'll second.
I'll second the motion.
I will say, I was not present for the September meeting, however, I have read through the minutes, so I will say yes to approve them.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
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 Very good, that brings us to our first item this evening. It is a public hearing for a conditional use, which is a request by applicant Jonathan Ann Baye. I apologize if I pronounce that incorrectly. On behalf of property owners Rodney and Barbara Hamilton. Ms. Vinegar, if you could please talk us through-
I should swear her first.
Oh, certainly, please.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
Ms. Vinegar, if you would?
All right, so this is for a conditional use for a youth group home at 4116 South Main Street. The property is currently zoned for attached residential districts where multifamily dwellings proposed to be operated as group homes. A conditional use that requires review and approval by the City's planning and management. I'm getting into property background, subject property, code for parcels, that equate to just over a half an acre according to Butler County's address website. The last documented use of the property according to records that I can access is a multifamily residence, specifically the city's zoning map does identify. The primary structure is a five-family dwelling. The Butler County address website identifies the structure as a mixed residential slash commercial structure. I do want to call out that the county does propose a local jurisdiction for zoning purposes. But pertinent here is the structure was built in 1936 with four units in the building in total of over 4,000 square feet of gross building area. And then I did look on Zillow, as I've already noted on properties on the contract, just to get a little bit more information on the property. Zillow listing for the subject property states the property is four units, so we have a good discrepancy on the number of units in total with the following number of bedrooms and bathrooms. Unit A is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom. Unit B is three-bedroom, one-bathroom. Unit C is one-bedroom, one-bathroom. Unit E is identified as a summer cottage, which is a two-bedroom, one-bathroom. So the purpose of the R4 zoning district, I'm sure you guys are fairly familiar with, that is our highest density residential zoning district. And then you can see a couple pictures, the bottom two were pulled from the Zillow listing, the top one was pulled from Google Maps. Getting into staff analysis, looking at chapter 1204, oh wait, permitted with principal uses. This is one of those where we have the gap in our zoning regulations that a multifamily structure dwelling, that going to operate as a group home, is a conditional use in the PI, VCR, VCF, and VCS zoning districts. We do not call out how to address multifamily dwellings operated as group home in R1, R2, R3, R4, et cetera zoning districts. So after considering the cross-ground pod, when this application came across my desk, we are using that ability to judge the use most similar to an established use in our zoning code. So that's being the proposed use of the conditional use.
Good.
Further looking at those use-specific standards identified for group homes, so this is part B of those use-specific standards where it's permit to multifamily dwellings. So such facilities must comply with the site development standards and architectural standards that apply to all residential buildings within applicable districts. Further, the facility must comply with all parking, fencing, and site regulations in applicable districts. Because this is an existing building, not a new building, it's a non-performing structure, not an unperforming structure. So that brings us to, per the application, entire structural would be used for their proposed use, and there are no alterations or changes planned for the building. The applicant did not specify the number of beds for the proposed facility, so it is unclear if the parking required is our met, which is one space for two beds, for our parking standards. And no plans have been received in regards to any proposed fencing or signage. Getting into the definitions, I think it's really important to understand what a group home is. So we define the group home use type in chapter 1230 as any residential facility meant as a permanent residence or persons licensed by the State of Ohio designed to allow not more than 16 persons needing specialized care, counseling, ongoing medical treatment, supervision, to live in the same building or complex. Abilings engage in some contrergetty running activity in a non-institutional environment as regulated by chapters 5119, 5120, and 5123 of the Ohio Vice Code. Looking at the definition how it applies to the application, according to the application received, the applicant provides to use the property as behavioral. A youth group home provides a safe, structured, supportive living environment for youth who are experiencing emotional, behavioral, or developmental challenges. And I do want to call out, in your staff report, there's quite an extensive narrative from the State of Ohio's mental health and addiction services as it relates to residential facilities. However, as I was preparing my PowerPoint, I became aware that there are multiple licensing agencies for group homes in the state. I have not received an application or a license from the applicant to clarify who would be the licensing agency for this. So going off of that, the various licensing state agencies for group homes or residential facilities are as follows. The State of Ohio has Health and Addiction Services, Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities, and Ohio Department of Children and Youth. As for the conditional land use, that is within our single-family land use category. So we're looking at more of that single-family residential uses, but include parks, recreational uses, and neighborhood churches and schools. This is also within our city's urban core development area. There is a whole division and proposed land uses in here as staff comment. As for noticing, I have not received any comments to date, as well as any comment. And then getting into other department comments, our Health Department has noted that there is a concern with over-saturation of the living out in the city. And there is a strong desire to ensure that current ones are operating in full compliance with local and state regulations. It says in close proximity to several city parks, schools, and the high school football stadium. The applicant does not clarify the number of rooms to be used for proposed use, the number of children that will be at the facility, if there will be a mixture of genders, or how the facility will be managed. Fire Department states that review will be required to determine if the fire suppression system, fire alarm system will be needed to be in compliance with fire code, non-institutional plans, circle and special division. And there's also concern on if the residents will be able to self-activate and move better. Police Department really is concerned with why the applicant has chosen gold town for this use. If the applicant has any past experience operating with the homes, and if so, where? The Police Department is also concerned with where is the applicant receiving children, is it from the state agencies, is it from a parent agency? Please define youth. And this is an additional saturation of this proposed living type in our sound plan. As for building inspection, a set of architectural plans will be required, and the property must be in compliance with Ohio Building Code prior to certificate of occupancy issued. Fire suppression system and fire alarm system may be required upon termination made on review of professional architectural plans. As for staff recommendation, based on staff report provided prior to planning and commission approval, if you so choose, the applicant should submit an applicable licensure to the city and provide additional information in regards to proposed use. And then should the planning and commission move to approve the application in total, staff recommends all conditions be included in the approval. The applicant submit architectural plans from a licensed architect or engineer and be in full compliance with the city's building inspection division, Fire Department, prior to certificate of occupancy issuance, and any applicable permits. The applicant shall manage and operate the property in a manner that ensures it is not becoming used as property or services. And lastly, the planning and commission may revoke a conditional use approval after holding a hearing that is determined that the terms of conditional use conditional use approval have not been or not presently being met. Here is your review criteria for conditional use. Your additional criteria and conditions. I will appeal the process and now thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions that can be addressed to staff at this time?
I do. The concern with over-saturation, do we know? I know we've, I think this commission has addressed several applications similar to this. Do we know how, what the closest operating group home to this proposed group home would be?
I also, just to add on to that, because you mentioned we approved a similar. Because I remember that was kind of a topic during those discussions of whether or not it is a group of people living together, but is that by definition a group home within our kind of codes? So as you answer that, if you could also specify if that, if that comment was in relation to those types that we've approved recently, or if this is other instances that have not been recently part of our discussions?
So you have approved transitional homes as a category. That is within, if you look at our current zoning code, you have our special uses. And then we break it down by use category. So group living, within group living, you have assisted living or interpersonal care facilities, transitional living, group homes, which we do separate them out. Boarding houses, room and glory, which I have given a little one as. But all those typical, you're kind of living within a shared, a shared common space, enjoy your own group. But group home, that's where your definition really comes in with light here. This is not, this is really, this is not transitional home living, but it is similar in almost a nature. So transitional living, there is a distance requirement. You must be, you cannot be within 15 feet of another transitional house. However, group homes do not have that distance requirement. I don't, I can't exactly pull our files right now to see my, my idea of what the house for transitional homes. However, it goes back to the Health Department's concern of we want to get a grasp on how many we have operating in the city that are legally operating as well as illegally operating to get a full grasp on what the group living situation is like in the state.
To answer your question, Mr. Parsons, you have a transitional home in the corner of area and porch.
Yes.
Which is pretty much on the other side of like Rosa Parks from where this is, if you want to give an area map, but. Are we, are we safe to assume that in saying the number of group homes, that that staff comment could maybe better be understood to be group living instead? Okay. I think it does say, as far as the Health Department.
And it's a difference, they're all adults, this is the first, I think, that we've had since I've been here with youth.
Yeah, this is the first youth focus.
But they all do have mental health. This one's going to provide mental, some type of care, and then the one that we, the one around the corner involves mental health care on-site.
I think that one was already operating.
It was already oper-, it was two, yeah, they had two and they were already operating.
Is the applicant here or anybody representing?
Yeah, the applicant is.
Can you specify, are there specific? The fencing and signage was mentioned, is there specific standards for that within a group home as defined by our code?
No, that's, that's really in areas to be, for any, any use of being compliant with essential residential rules.
Okay.
You do have the ability to add additional conditional use to all sets. If you wanted to, then you can add to.
Okay. I was also curious, this will be something I assume we'll, we'll discuss with the applicant as well, but with it being the, the separate units and things, does that change anything with how we consider this of? You know, it'd be one thing if it's one big house versus if you have separate entryways and stuff, you know, it's more like an apartment. Does that change anything of the internal makeup of the structure, no?
I don't know how, it's still the same, so I would infer it would happen.
Okay, but as far as our code, that doesn't impact or any requirements there? Okay. Sure, hey, not while we're here, so that's fine.
I do have a question for staff, because I kind of work in this room in my other profession. Are there any requirements, since it is youth, about it being separate and it being allotted only to this service versus having outside tenants? Is it the whole building, including the back, going to be for just a group home for youth, or is it, is that allowed?
In the application, they say that the entire property, whatever it is such.
Okay.
Again, the only doesn't get to.
We don't have any.
That's a bit more for the state, the judicial process as well as.
But we don't have any. Okay.
And then can you also just state one more time the maximum number of beds that would be allowed? Was there, is there a maximum?
We define sixteen beds to be allowed.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
I have a few questions for staff.
Please.
So they, they, first of all, my first court court question, they're not doing this now, right?
Not tonight.
See, there's a couple of them. Go ahead. So I'm going through each department here. So we verify what licenses that are required, and staff has to be in there for that, that still need to be done?
To be a compliant group home, we state that it is to be licensed by a state of Ohio.
I'm assuming the Health Department portion of it, so that's the Health Department portion of it, okay? And then the Fire Department, a fire depression system and alarm system. So even though this is only, in my world, after three, three units, fourth unit in the same building, it becomes commercial. So I'm assuming that the Fire Department is treating this commercial because of the load of people that's in there, and the fact that you do have four units, one just happens to be detached. And this is, has to be.
Yeah, I think the way I understood it was Frank, a fire marshal, really wanted to consult with Larry, to get it.
And that makes sense, because you're going to have more than the usual amount of folks there. Because normally, if it's three apartments, you, what, the most you normally have, especially with those size of ninety, twelve people, four people in each, and then that cottage is a separate unit. So the fire suppression system, which is a system, like a circle system or something like that, and that means some serious renovation and also permitting. And then a, a fire alarm system, it might have to be monitor, almost like an ADT system where it actuates and actually calls the Fire Department, because it's been more than a normal load in there. I'm just kind of asking the question, but I'm also speaking, so it'll be okay. And then the determination of their maximum for the three units plus the separate unit is sixteen full folks. Does that include the staff that's in there, or is that sixteen folks allowed in there? Is that the total count of people, or is that the total count of?
I would say the way it's put in, for seven labels, for no more than sixteen persons, so I would say staff is included.
Staff is included, that's important, because that means you're going to have at least four or five more people in there. So now you have a structure that's going to have twenty people potentially, if I think that. Well, with that, but sixteen people living in there, staffs living in there, I would consider that's part of the.
I guess we should clarify whether or not staff will live on-site.
They have to for a group, for youth home.
They do?
Okay, if it's youth, they have to have somebody living there.
So sixteen total on the three, from three units, and then the size of the.
It might not be sixteen, it's really up to building code on Larry and what.
But that's our maximum for our code, is sixteen total occupants, we'll answer that one, okay? And then, and I agree with the chief here on this, on why Middletown? And the definition, what is the definition of youth? And the location of that. On the building inspection portion of this, again, this would be architect or a professional engineer, three sets of stand drawings, going to layer in his team to review. Looking at the photos, this is me with four decades of construction experience. I would also put in there, I want Larry to inspect the egress along with the fire marshal. Wood is great, wood is wonderful, but I'm looking at those egresses coming down, and even the front porch, and it just might need to be inspected, and say, yes, it's fine, or maybe it's out of the manufacturer recommended lifespan. Because you have more than the usual amount of folks coming in and coming out, even if it is a permanent dwelling. It's all questions I have for staff.
Couple comments also. Could you go back to the pictures of the buildings? That lower middle one there, right behind it, is a levee for the river. And the river's probably forty or fifty yards beyond it. And about two blocks away is a low-level bay. All those are very attractive to kids or teenagers. I grew up about three blocks from there myself, and I was over that levee quite a few times. But I think I would have a problem with a bunch of kids that goes to the river.
Should we open the public hearing so we can hear from the applicant?
That seems wise. Do we have any other comments before we do so? Okay, in that case, I will open the public hearing. If you are wishing to speak in favor of this conditional use, please come forward and be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. And identify yourself.
Jonathan Amboy.
And you'll have to keep your voice up too, because these aren't, these aren't amplifying. Thanks.
All right. I guess we can kind of work through some of the questions. Feel free or to jump in if there's some that are more pertinent at, at the time. For starters, can you talk us through your and maybe your partner's experience with this type of group home situation? And maybe the decision to, why you're looking at, at this property?
We have a group home currently in Dayton, Ohio, and Columbus, Ohio. Both of them are single family, and we're trying to expand, so basically was looking for a place where we can put sixteen kids. And that's why, that's how we found this Middletown property. We rented Columbus, Ohio for three years, and Dayton, Ohio, this, this is our first year on that one. And basically, we put teenagers in there that's not qualified for foster, foster home care. So we put them in this program until they get qualified to foster home, so. It's not really a transitional home, because there's no amount of time, how long they have to stay with us till they correct their behavior and get accepted. But that's our job to make sure they qualify to foster home, so they can be in the foster system. Right now, they stay properties, basically.
Okay. Are these generally then, what's, it said youth, are we talking more like teenager, children?
It's going to be between thirteen till eighteen.
Okay. And can, with having to be approved to go into the foster system, is this due to some sort of like criminal background, behavioral? What's usually the, what, what do they have to work towards to be able to be?
Behavioral, mental, and criminal also.
Okay.
But yeah, some kids are in jail, but it's not really that they committed a crime, but they just can't get accepted in foster home system. So they keep them in juvenile center until they find a group home to put them in.
And so those would be, I'm assuming cases of mental or behavioral issues, okay?
It's only, because we going through the mental, through the state mental institute. So we, most likely, we're going to be getting mental, kids with mental problems.
In which case then, staff mentioned a number of licensing agencies within the state. What, what is your licensure through for this?
So in order to apply for the license for this property, we have to get the zoning first. So this, this to start, once we get the zoning, we apply for it, and we have to get a, we have to go through third party to get cred. Once we get the zoning, we apply for it and we have to get a, uh, uh, we have to go through a third party to get cred, credit, credentials. To get qualified and then we submit everything to the state.
Okay, what, what do you, what, uh, group then we, is, are you going to be submitting to then, I suppose?
What was that again?
Is, is it just, uh, is it what like department, I guess, within the state or who's gonna, who, who will be issuing that license?
Mental, the mental, uh, health institute.
Uh, is that, uh, this, the licensure you have for the other two?
The first one, we went through job and family services, but job and family services are backed up right now, so mental, the mental institute is handling this process.
Okay.
Um, I have a question about, um, I see listed, there's units A, B, C, and E. Um, where is unit D? Is that just a typo on our end?
It's our previous owners.
Okay, noted, thank you.
Uh, are you looking at, um, how, how many people? So we, we talked about the maximum number of occupants being sixteen. Do you currently have an idea of what that number would look like?
Yes, so our idea is to start with one unit, just five kids, and grow up to the sixteen. But we have to follow the, the health department and, uh, uh, protocols and policies. So we're currently working with them to see how many employees do we need? And these kids are, are gonna be monitored twenty-four seven, somebody have to be at the property twenty-four seven. We have, uh, licensed therapist, licensed nurse, and, um, cook, that's gonna be there at all time.
How does, uh, schooling work for the, the kids?
Schooling, uh, there's this, uh, stuff they have to follow. Once they pass all that, we can basically submit them to any school around the, around the area. But since we getting, um, the kids from the state, I don't know where they be, where they coming from, basically. It can be coming from any city within the state.
Assuming though, so once they're here, if they're fit to do so, they would go to Middletown City Schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Qualify and check out on everything, yes.
Okay.
Sir, um. Who, what, you, you know, the one concern was, who is, what's the feeder source for your residents? Is it the court? Are they private, uh, referrals, uh, self, are these all court? All of them?
Uh, not all, I can go through the mental institute and court, basically.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Uh, the mental institute, they issue the kids from the court or from a mental, um, ins- institute, basically, like a psych ward for kids? So some of them graduate from there and they have to come to the group home and graduate from this, and then they'll end up in a foster home. And some of them are in court system because they got in trouble.
So your home is the, a step toward going into foster care?
Yes, one step before that.
They have to be. Their behavior has to be addressed before they can go into foster care?
Yes.
Okay.
And it seems this isn't the first step, so they've come from some sort of like a psych ward or maybe detention center, then to here, then.
I mean, I'm just curious if they're there pursuant to a court sentence? Or whether it's, uh, some type of a diversion program that, uh, in lieu of going to court and being sentenced, they come to your home? I, I, I don't, I don't know how that works.
So in Dayton, we getting a lot of court, uh, court ordered kids.
Mm-hmm.
Because, um, they run away from foster home, they get in trouble, they stop going to school, and somehow they end up in a juvenile, um, center. And from there, basically, the court cannot give them to a foster home because they don't, they, they're not, uh, regular kids. They have issues we have to address, some of them being in the trauma and stuff. So once they come to my house, I have to, there's an assessment we have to follow every day. And once the, once they pass the assessment, we call the caseworker and give them the report. And based on that, they find a foster home that can, they, they can belong, they can go in and progress, basically.
The, the two homes that you currently are operating are a single family, right?
Yes.
Dayton and Columbus?
Yes.
Are they, are they minors? Are they?
Yeah, the kids, yeah.
They're minors?
Yeah, we doing the youth.
And how many, how many kids in each one of those homes?
Uh, the, the maximum you can have in a single family is five.
I mean, do you have five in, in those homes?
I have three currently.
Three in Dayton and how many in Columbus?
Columbus is five, it's four.
Is what?
Five, five.
You got five there?
Yeah.
Okay.
With Dayton, we still building up the staff.
What's the average length of stay that you, you anticipate?
Uh, the most a kid stayed with us is two years and the earliest being six months.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of supervision do you have over these kids?
We have, we have staff twenty-four seven.
Would you keep them in the building, on the line, or would you?
They, they stay in the building most of the time. We always have stuff for them to do, they have to follow. So they, they won't be wandering around outside or without a supervision. They're not allowed to leave the property by themselves.
Are they enrolled in school?
They will be.
Will be, if they're eligible, I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
My concern is, because there's four different buildings, how that'd be, do you have a staff to operate? Because is, is it gonna, are, are you guys gonna open it up or keep it separate? Because if you keep it separate, that's additional staff and additional, because one building's in the back upstairs, the other one. Are you able to operate in that since you've only had single family homes?
So with the, I wanna see what the requirement is with the mental institute first. On how many staff do I need per, because this is my first time doing a multiple unit. But, um, I'm, I'm not sure to be hon, if I have to, uh, uh, put a staff for each unit, I would do that. But I'm thinking since all in the same house, maybe they can man, one, like, you know, few staff can manage all the units probably, I'm not sure.
So we'll just assume that, um, it's operating at sixteen, um, residents. And then we'll also assume that you're able to get by with just the three staff members, the cook, the licensed therapist, and the licensed nurse. So that would be nineteen people on site minimum at your operate, at your full, like, operating capacity. Do you have the, um, I have, for lack of a better word, the capital to invest into the property to bring it up to code for having that many people on site at all times?
The building should be up to code right now.
I mean, as far as the fire standards and everything that we were discussing?
That's something I have to invest in there, yes.
Okay.
If I have to put fire suspension, I will do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just so we're all on, on the same page, counsel, I know you, you mentioned including the full-time staff within those number of occupants. Was that, am I correct in my understanding of that?
Yes.
Okay. In which case then, so if it is three full-time staff, we're looking at thirteen maximum allowed?
Plus, I don't think the therapists, the cook are the, they're not staying there.
Okay.
So he means the people like staying with the kids.
Okay.
Yeah, not living there.
Not the licensed people, the, um, yeah, the support staff will be staying there on.
Even if they're not living there, they'll be physically present.
Yeah, and if he says he wants to start with one room, so.
Yeah.
He says five, it probably will be six people in the first building and then as he grows, yeah, it probably will be four.
Thank you for that, uh, clarification. Uh, can you touch on a little bit of your, uh, background? I guess some of your professional or kind of, are, are you one of the, uh, like, uh, prof, professional people that's gonna be on site there? Like, what's, what's your role in coordinating these?
At the beginning, I will be at the property, um, almost every day until we fill the building up, basically. Because I have to train, uh, employees, I have to keep finding new employees, and I have to make sure everything is going smooth. And make sure that employees and the kids are following policy.
Understood.
We have a big policy we have to follow for, with the mental institute.
Makes sense. And, um, the individuals that would come to this home could be from anywhere in the state? Are they largely from this region or how's that?
Anywhere from the state.
Okay.
Yeah, with the job and family services, usually they do regional, but with the mental institute is.
Could be anywhere.
In the state.
Okay.
So, social workers will come and drop them off, basically.
Uh, do you have any plans as far as, uh, we'd kind of just mentioned fencing, just curious, is that something that you plan to work into as far as kind of closing off the property there or no?
If I have to, I'll do it. Whatever I have to do to stay by the code, I'm, I'm willing to do it.
Okay.
Does the Department of Mental Health, I think that's the licensing agency that you're seeking your certification from? Do they have a, uh, a s, number of staff per youth ratio that you're required to maintain? I'm thinking, I mean, if there were, I think you, you, you anticipate three full-time people on staff?
Yes.
Living in the home?
They, they won't be living out.
Who, who, how many people will be living in the home that are gonna be supervisory staff?
I will have one person at least twenty-four hours.
Is, does the depart, Department of Mental Health? For a home like this, do they have a staff to, to resident ratio that you're? One, one person for fifteen youths with these types of behavioral issues seems to me to be a little overwhelming for a staff member.
Right, that, that part I'm not sure about. Whatever.
Okay.
The requirements are, I'm willing to follow that. But I never did, uh, four units, so.
Plus multiple buildings.
Plus multiple buildings, which would, I mean, you're anticipating having residents in the back building?
Yes.
And in the front building?
Yes.
Which I would assume at a minimum would require one person per, permanent in both of those.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Structures at a minimum.
Could you, you kind of touched on that earlier, could you?
Yeah, so from what he's saying, the staffing are two different sectors. His workers through him will be there full-time, plus the kitchen staff, plus the therapist. So that'd be three different people, but potentially, um, he's only gonna operate one building yet, so five, five, up to five residents right now. And he said, he'll see how it goes. But more than likely, because they're separate units, it would be probably treated as though they're separate entities and he will have to. Not with the therapist and not with the cook, but at least the staff probably in each unit. Because they are, it's, it's a separate unit, it's even zoned that way, even though it's attached, um.
You like, if he had four different buildings or spread out around the city, it just so happens that they're.
Because someone has to be with the kids at all times. And they are in separate.
Do you know what the, I'm, 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 now you're not sworn in, so I'm asking. Do you know what the sta, uh, full-time staff, supervisory staff to, uh, uh, resident ratio is?
I thought it was six to one, but it might be less than that.
To what?
I thought it was six to one, but it might be less than that.
Six to one?
I also think it's six to one, I don't know that for certain.
Yeah, I don't wanna, yeah.
Ninety-five percent should be six to one, yeah.
Uh, I do have a question, why Middletown?
We just, we was looking for a multi-unit apartment, I mean, multi-unit building, and we just happened to find one in Middletown.
And do you?
I was looking more in Dayton.
Okay.
Because we already have another one.
All right, so, uh, because my concern is, my concern is the river. Um, I did, I also grew up in that area and I didn't even live close to the river, but we always geared towards their playing. I even have stories of my husband playing over there, playing with the armory, the armory is down the road, but still, that area is just. And you're saying some kids with behavior, I know it could be ther, therapeutic, but it also could be a place to run to when they're mad. And so I just wanna make sure that those things are addressed and some type of plan for that is incorporated if you are able to move forward.
If I'm allowed to put a fence, I'll fence the back of the property. But the kids will be supervised twenty-four seven, yeah.
All right, so you've done like an analysis, have you spoke with, um, I guess, the people in the area to see like how it kind of works? Have you seen or spoke with any other people who have group homes? There's a group home on the str, same street, it's for adults though, but it is behavior health. It's probably about a mile up the road to see how they, like, maybe see how they operate theirs or anything. I, I would suggest looking into that to see.
We have a huge group in Dayton.
Mm-hmm.
With, uh, everybody that owns group homes and we have.
Oh, yeah, they, they are, okay.
We meet once, uh, once every six months.
So you do, okay, so you had asked for the understanding.
Opened that Middletown, have something like that, so.
Okay.
I can be part of the group too.
Okay. I don't think I have.
Uh, any other questions at this time? Is it okay if I ask a couple of questions? I'm sorry, it's like the voice behind you, but, um, yeah. So are you, are you, you're licensed by the state or your overarching organization is? What's the overarching organization?
Each one of them are individual.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Each, each house is separate.
Oh, each house is separate?
Yeah.
And so there's, and you're a private entity then that's operating the separate houses? Or are they all run by you?
I have partners.
You have partners?
Yeah.
As like part of an organization, not even state related, but just like a separate, like, it's an LLC, what's, what's the name of the LLC?
Uh, T and S group home, that's one of them.
Okay. And you said they've received certification for diff, other group homes in Dayton and in?
Columbus.
Columbus. And that was through, is that the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services or is there?
Dayton one is through job and family services.
And then the other one's through Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services? Okay. Okay. And this one would be through Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services? Okay. My understanding of that was that the licensure comes before the zoning. Like your LLC is organized, have you spoken to them and they've said that's not the case?
They already have the LLC organized, on this one, it's gonna be youth behavioral solutions LLC. The, the, the beginning of the, their application is we have to check on the zoning, get the occupants information and, uh, our, our inspection.
Okay. Okay. I'm, one, one more question, sorry, just, um, I know that Dayton has had, issued a moratorium on group homes. Are you aware of that or how that's, has that affected your operations there?
Yeah, we have to, we have to set up in Troutwood, this is a suburb of Dayton, because in Dayton, I guess, they had a lot of them operating with no license. So we need to crack down, close the whole bunch of them off. But, uh, the process got a little stricter, but we, we was able to get our license in progress.
Okay, I just, just for code purposes with the licensure by the state of Ohio, and I am not on the planning commission, to be clear. But some sort of, um, and again, this is up to the board, but showing coordination with that agency and that you've worked with them would be probably useful for the city for purposes of this. Just my two cents, that's all I have, thank you.
I do have one more question. And, um, is it gonna be all boys, all girls, or mixed? Okay, because I forgot to ask that, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Um, just to clarify, because, uh, with you being turned around, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Did I hear correctly that, so part of the reason why there's a difference here of the licensing is this is gonna be under a separate LLC? Your other one is already licensed, you have those homes, this is a separate one, and so that's why you don't have, okay.
This one is gonna be the only one, uh, by myself, basically, because with all the ones, I have partners.
Understood.
And I think you told Bobby what the name of the LLC was that's operating the Dayton and Columbus homes. Will that same LLC be operating, what, what will be the name of this LLC?
Youth Behavioral Solutions LLC.
Youth Behavioral Solutions LLC.
Okay.
We just created this LLC about three weeks ago. We got a EIN and, uh, registered with state of Ohio.
Okay. Mr. Horne, did you have any questions? It looked like you were maybe gonna ask something. Okay. All right, anything else from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
There is anyone else wishing to speak in support? Please come forward and be sworn in. All right, I have no response. Oh, either of you? No, okay. If there is anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward and be sworn in.
Solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very, very, very pro-alienation for my family and just hope they're probably, and this is probably the first time I've ever seen in a report that they start concerning. But let me be very clear, I want people to get the necessary help they need. And I really, I'm truly, I'm truly saying that, I want people who need help to get that. But I just feel that this is not a good fit for Middletown. I just feel that this is too much, too close proximity to the river, to, uh, the south side neighborhoods. And the concern of they have to do a certain amount, and then they get to go into our school system. Again, I want people to get help, to get the necessary help, but our school system, um, struggles at times with the students they already have. And it would be different if this was, this is all Middletown kids. That's a total different conversation. This is everyone from Middletown has this opportunity to utilize these services, which they do with the child finding services, the public county, and through the services we have locally. But to have the whole, and let's not say the whole state, but to say it's southwestern Ohio, that's large, that's in Columbus to the river. And they're core appointed, or core, uh, required, um, and the structure to be moving at all the things that have to be done in order just to make it safe and compliant. The roads are very stringent for a reason, because it's where people live, and I just see a lot of holes here that are really concerning. Obviously, you guys are, City Council's being a brain trust, but, um, I'm just telling you as the representative of the City Council, I am very much not for this particular situation at this time.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward and be sworn in? Having no response, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to deliberation. Mr. Mintel, did you look like you had a thought?
Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm thinking that I agree with Mr. Horn, but, um, I think I disagree on the matter of scale. It's not that I don't think that this is proper for Middletown, I think that this particular location is not a good fit. Just considering the other, um, transitional homes in the neighborhood that we've approved, uh, recently. The proximity to, um, you know, like, barnets, um, and downtown where, you know, currently as that part of town stands, there's not a lot of good influence that you see, like, walking down, um, you know. I, I'm just imagining being one of the children in there, not able to leave. Um, it, all of these units are individual instead of part of like a larger, like, if these were four units that were attached with an inside atrium, that would be different. But these are all through the outside, um, but not being able to leave without supervision, vision, knowing that, you know, there are these parks and, you know, like barnets and the river nearby, and not being able to go, that would personally make me, um, like, I, I just don't think this location and its proximity to things that are good for families to do, like, I, I think there's a contradiction there, and I'm just not having, I'm not able to put like the words like to it, does that make sense? But, um, uh, yeah, like I said, matter of scale and location, just seems like a, a lot of mismatched parts trying to come together to get this project together, which has good intentions, but maybe would be a better fit for a different site.
I'm not sure if this is, uh, maybe a little bit irregular, I do see we have chief present. Would you maybe be willing or able to, if we swore in, could you tell us, uh, we have some of the, a, a good amount of comments here from the department? I'm, I'm kind of curious now, after hearing from the applicant, if you would feel that some of these concerns have been addressed? Or if there are still existing concerns at, in, from the department's, oh, here we go, from the department's perspective? How about that?
So are we reopening the public comments?
Uh, I, it, I'm not sure, but does this count as a public comment really, or is this like staff?
Let's, let's call it public comment.
Okay, oh, okay.
Can't hurt to swear, swear in the chief. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, ju- so just to say again, I apologize, you, you may have only heard the last bit there at the end with the mic coming on. Um, if you could just address a little bit, you, uh, shared a lot of valid concerns from your department. I just kind of want to hear in, in your own words, some of these, especially in regards to, we've heard from the applicant now. Do you feel in, in your capacity that, uh, some of these concerns have been, been addressed or answered, or what are the, where are still the outstanding concerns?
Raised more concerns for me, um, um, A, I guess, I left, take a note on my phone, left it up there, I'll try to remember from my head. When you mentioned that Dayton has put a restriction or a moratorium on their, um, group homes, they sought outside cities to go looking at, which means that, to me, that sounds to me like they came here because Dayton shut them down. We're dealing with a couple of group homes now that are causing us, or putting a lot of strain on, um, public services and, um, first responders such as police and fire. Uh, we dealt with one today for four hours, um, who wasn't a resident of the city of Middletown. They were brought here by, um, Children's Services, uh, I want to say a couple of weeks ago, we had to deal with another one, and that was here from Cuyahoga County, so to say, it, it's not going to come from southwest Ohio, it's coming from all over state. It does place a huge strain on much amount of time we spend there, um, at those houses.
Is there any other, uh, questions or items we'd want to get the chief's perspective on?
I guess, do you get lots of calls of people having accidents along the river?
There's, there's some fishing, and there's some things like that that goes on down there as far as the juvenile services. Um, it, it kind of fluctuates throughout the times that they're in school and out of school. When you say the, the proximity thing, I'm trying to remember from my notes, the proximity thing is a concern for us as well. I know we're just mentioning a group home here, but if you look at, at these, um, places such as the Hope House, the Women's Shelter, the Transitional Living, the Unsheltered Population, things that go on, on this side of town, while it's not sitting directly, um, next to this house, it is within a close proximity of walking distance, which is. It's a bad element for that, that part of town, and, and again, that, as, as the police chief, and we look to deter crime and make the city safer and change, uh, the perspective and how people view the city of Middletown, it, it's just not, we would recommend, um, you're bringing in bad elements from other counties, um, the state of Ohio, which is not something that we want to do. To me, it's more or less of, hey, we want to bring some good into the city, not something bad, and not spend all our time and resources as a police department, um, policing, for lack of a better term, to other people's problems.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will, uh, reclose then for public comments, uh, do we have any further deliberation then?
No, I don't, I don't have anything else to discuss, but, um, if anybody else does, I'm open to listening.
Well, and, and I look at the first, I, I know this is an urban core development area, but the, the overall plan in the master pla- the Middletown Master Plan, this, this property is a single-family land use category, obviously for single families. Uh, and, and with sec- secondary uses being those that we enjoy as amenities, that being parks, recreational uses, and churches and schools, and my, my, my cons- my concern is, it, when I first read the definition of, uh, or the type of kids that are going to be there, and I agree with Mr. Horn, clearly, all these kids need help, but the question becomes, is this location a conducive location? Or, or are we, are we looking at a situation that is, that could create problems for the, I mean, it, it's unpredictable, we can't. But if, if you've got children that are youths, that are referred by the courts, and this is a, a step toward being placed in foster care, I mean, we're talking about some kids that have got some issues if they can't be placed in foster care. And, uh, I, I don't, my, my opinion is it shouldn't be in this location. It, we're, we're trying to revitalize that, the south side of Middletown, and is this, is this conducive to revitalization? That's, I, I'm not.
This is maybe a quarter mile from Rosa Parks Elementary School, and then directly across the street from this building, there's usually twenty to twenty-five kids trying to learn how to play soccer, Pee-wee football, and cheerleading almost every night. I have a problem with, with the location, also by the river, but beyond that, I'm going to vote to deny.
Okay.
Like, on the one hand, it's good for children that are struggling to be nearby, these, you know, community amenities where they have the chance to integrate, but if they're under twenty-four-hour supervision and they can't leave the property, you know, um, that kind of negates that benefit, you know, tho- those community benefits. So like, it, it's real, it's real tough for me, because like, like I said, I, and like Mr. Cash said, um, I, I just think this is a matter of location, not content, does that make sense?
Can I ask staff, um, as we discussed at the beginning, due to the differences in which bucket they kind of fall under, even though it's all within that same general group living? Um, I know there is not a current requirement as far as how many within a certain, um, distance of each other. Uh, I know there is, if it's, if it's the other type that we've had previously, what is the, there we go, what is the, the distance that we're looking at, the closest one? I heard it mentioned earlier, is it, is it literally like down the street? What, what is the closest one?
Um, so the, yeah, I would agree with that. Um, if you look at this map, you can see the property is somewhere around here, where the arrow points. Um, right here is the intersection of Fourteenth and Verity, so it's quite literally right where my, my cursor is. Um, so, yeah, four to five blocks maximum.
It's not even four, it literally is, I don't think it'd be four blocks.
Do, do you recall what the requirement is of those, uh, the transitional housing, of how far apart they have to be?
Fifteen hundred feet.
Is this, would this pr- most likely be within that then?
I, I am not spatially.
In my definition of my job, if you're not doing permanent housing, and they're the, transitional housing is exactly what he just mentioned. But the other unit is not transitional housing, so they will have that leeway, because it's not, they ha- they're defined as a different type of.
Yeah, it's not, it's not defined, I'm just.
But it still would be, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, I recognize that this is not, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking just to get an idea, because we're talking about, it, it's, it's a little muddy, because we're discussing these, um, situations of people not from one family being brought together here, living in, in a, a group living, all falls under that, the more specified.
The buildings itself would, would block itself, because you will have several, you, you're right.
So I, I recognize that this is not an actual requirement of what it is, the distance between, I'm just wanting to get a, a better, uh, summarization, especially addressing some of the staff comments as, uh, as far as concerns of there being a large number of group living homes within the city, and just getting a full picture of that.
And my, my problem is that the other home is drug abuse and mental health, so, and they're adults, so that's really close to each other in that realm. Also, you're right by Route Four, um, I would, I would be concerned of someone having a home that close to where if they wanted to run away, Route Four is right there, get in the car, and you never see them again.
All right, um, unless there's any other, um, comments, um, I, I personally, I'm very torn. I, uh, ad- admire, uh, the, uh, perceived motivation behind, uh, this application of not only wanting to help those in need of help, but especially youth, uh, I think that is extremely admirable, and, um, that being said, taking into account the various concerns from different departments. I got to say, in my time on this board, this is probably the most that we've seen on something like this, so wanting to take that into account, especially hearing from our, um, chief of police, which isn't one that we often have come up on these, um, types of applications. I, I believe, uh, a couple of you have said now, it's, it's, um, not so much the item itself, but the location, I, I find that very compelling as well. All these things, uh, taken into account, I would, uh, make a motion to deny.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Cash?
Yes, to deny.
And Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, to deny.
That brings us to older new business, item A is a planned development time limit extension, this is a request by Jordan Wallace of Wallace Construction Management. Uh, Ms. Benninger, can you please take us through this item?
I'd be happy to, um, so this is a time limit extension as related to our planned development district review process. Um, this is to receive an additional one-year extension of the final development plan approval to allow for a total of four years before development begins. The final development plan, its original form, was approved by Planning Commission on November ninth of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so going off of the, the text there, Planning Commission has the ability to approve up to two one-year time limit extensions, um, provided that the extension is not in conflict with the most current pa- master plan, and that such extension is in the best interest of the entire community. Um, so going back to that final development plan, um, for the planned development was approved on November ninth of twenty-twenty-two. The first time limit extension for the final development plan was approved by Planning Commission on November thirteenth of twenty-twenty-four. And lastly, a major amendment to the planned development was approved by Planning Commission on December eleventh of twenty-twenty-four, and City Council on February eighteenth of twenty-twenty-five. Also included in your staff packet was the reason for extension request, uh, Mr. Wallace notes that, um, his development company, uh, his construction company is currently working with staff to improve the site conditions with fulfilling the request for additionally approved multifamily dwelling units. And would respectfully request an extension to allow staff and us, the developer, to work together, um, towards that site change. And I can confirm that I have received an updated, uh, major amendment application, that will be before you, um, at the November meeting, so the applicant is actively working towards a final amendment, um, for your review.
So we previously approved an amendment, and now there's another one that's being proposed?
Yes, so this, the second amendment is, the fir- let me, let me backtrack, the first amendment increased the density, so it increased the number of apartment units, it removed a commercial use, um, from that, that planned development, it shuffled the, the buildings around, and then in your, your next, and this is only for context to prove that the applicant is in fact working towards, um, a, a, a new site plan. The new site plan also includes a public street to city code, um, and reorganizes those buildings around one more time, so.
So does, does staff, uh, believe that the site conditions can be fulfilled within this next one year's, I mean, that's, it, 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 we're currently working with staff to improve the site conditions, and with the extra year, the staff being the experts, or the, with the knowledge in this, are the site conditions, the, the, uh, the modifications to site conditions, can they be fulfilled, um, realistically?
I believe so, yes, they, there are some non-zoning. I believe so, yes. They, there are some non-zoning reviews and approvals that are contingent upon Planning Commission approval of the time limit extension and then the major amendment. So, yes, the, it's factual.
We believe this is realistic, the, the end product is realistic.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
As far as I understand it.
Thank you.
One of the order, Chairman Parsons. So let me give you a background on this. This is, what, 314 units? We, as a group, approved that. This has really nothing to do with you guys. This is, the, this group wants more, 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 more whipped cream and cherries on top of the sundae, if you follow what I mean. So they want more tiffs, bonds, everything else they can get, which I understand, when business is business and you're spending 20, 30 million dollars. I thought this was over becau-, this was over because, you know...
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions or deliberation that's needed on this item?
So just to clarify, I saw that it, it was stated that the Planning Can-, Commission can approve up to two extensions, and this is the first?
This is the second.
This is the second?
This is the second.
Okay.
So up, up to two extensions. After that, the, the Plan Development District turns into a pumpkin and it goes back to its original zoning.
Okay, so this is essentially the last chance to get this sort of development off the ground?
Yes, and construction is defined as, or development is defined as, yes, the start of construction of the required public and private improvements as shown on the approved final development plan. So that is, once dirt is moving, then the, the concern of, oh, it's been X amount of years since the final development plan has been approved, it, it is now in, in construction phase.
I mean, this is something...
They haven't started anything yet.
No.
Can they actually do something to turn dirt in the next 12 months? When they have the permits they need and all that sort of thing?
It, it is, to my understanding, that it is their full intention to move forward with the project.
If that's the case, it sounds like it's, you know, that is a project we'd want to see. It's, it's a project we, we want to see, so.
How many other projects are going to land in our lap, offering 314 homes and that sort of footprint in the next year? I think that's something worth considering.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that... Do we have to open this to the public?
No, this is, this is just...
Okay.
I will move to approve the one-year extension for the final development plan approval, as requested.
I will second that motion.
All right, Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Mintel?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel? Mr. Cash?
Yes.
And Ms. Ramsey?
Yes.
Item B under old new business is the Middletown Development Code update.
All right, I will continue reminding you all of some upcoming dates. Just to give a brief recap, I did send out an after-action email after last Planning Commission, for those that were not in attendance, because this is such a big project that involves Planning Commission as well as City Council, as well as all residents within the city. In the past, the past key dates to kind of remind you all of, is that our consultants gave a presentation under City Manager Report on September 2nd at City Council. The recording is available on the city's YouTube page, and if I recall correctly, it starts around the 40-minute mark. So if you have not watched that project presentation, please watch that. It gives a great introduction of the project. I believe Ms. Ramsey was present, and it gives a great update of, here's why we're doing this. Here's what you can expect from the consultant, the city, and your Planning Commission and City Council going forward. We did have our public, first public workshop last Thursday, and I had asked at the last Planning Commission meeting, if you're attending, please attend more of in a listening manner rather than a participatory manner. That way, it gives voices to just your residents, because this is a great segue into the next one. You will all have dedicated study sessions with the consultant. There are four in total. They will be special meetings to not bog down your regular meeting agendas. I know we've been a little bit light lately, but when we were setting the, the study sessions up, your agendas were getting pretty long. So your first study session will be on November 13th. That is a Thursday. I would like to plan for 5:30 or 6:00 PM, depending on your availability. And I will send an after-action email after this meeting, probably tomorrow or Friday, maybe Monday at the latest. Please respond to me about your time preference, and only me. That way, we can start to set that time date. And I, I would like to have it more in a conference room setting rather than this, so that way, we can all be working together at a table and have a great conversation. The public will be invited to attend. Your second study session will be on January 22nd of 2026. Same, same approach, same scenario. You'll get a draft of the, oh, I should backtrack. You'll get a draft of what we're going to be talking about. It's a track changes document showing what the consultant is suggesting or recommending to change. That way, you can kind of track and, and be on, on, on track. I know it's, reuse the word. But understand what, what we're moving towards when it becomes time for adoption. You're, you're aware and you've seen those edits prior to in those study sessions for those various chapters that we're updating. So if you have any questions about the project, feel free to reach out to me. I can answer any questions right now. But just please watch the recording of that, that City Managers' report and then just be ready to, to talk and, and work through those proposed changes as we release those, those draft documents to you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay.
I was at that meeting on YouTube, and this is, and I brought us some things, but they kind of showed some examples of what, what they've done with other cities. This is your opportunity. This is one of those once in a lifetime, because a year from now, this has to be done. So when you're going through, this is not a take our two big volumes and, you know, set them on fire. It's more of, let's see what's working for our city, what good things we've done, and what other cities have done, and kind of think that our new ordinance, they, they, we do a place on, I put five ordinance. This is kind of exciting where you have a special session, like in, sort of two seats might be better than three seats. It has a little more rooms, that's what airport needs. So if they're, it does show up there, like a little city area back, you have a nice big conference room, conference table. That's why I ask questions. I notice they, and this is just me, 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 they almost like, they show some examples of just how landscaping helps the downtown area. They almost Disney it, where it's like, you know, it's a parking lot, but they have these mediums, they have this and they have that, and makes it just more appealing for folks. Yeah, it takes more maintenance, but it's just those ordinances that kind of make sense, and it should encompass the whole city and these, and these brothers that are actually doing this. So you have these special sessions, and you get your own special sessions. It's kind of nice. It's like, I'm going to try to get this one here. And then where it takes my place in January. But it, it's just one of those rare opportunities where, yes, you're doing this for the low, low price and free, thank you. But you are the brain trust. A former legal director said that one time, that was a great thing to say about what Planning Commission truly is. You're the brain trust of City Council. And this is a great opportunity to bring some ideas, say, look, you know, I noticed this up here, or you have, you ever heard of this? That's why I like the mixture of agents that we have. So it's just the, the video, the, the brothers gave a very nice presentation, so watch that. If you got to attend that one meeting, I was not able to. But this is a rare opportunity, so make every meeting that you can, you know, that's why I found that, where you can facilitate and add to those new volumes.
Thank you. Do we have anything else for the good of the order?
This might be something that is better geared for these study sessions. But like, recently, when I'm out doing my community work, I've been approached by people that have been like frustrated by some of the limitations of like how we notify about like things that'll be on our agenda. Like, one thing in particular, like with the developments that we, that we denied by Miller Ridge, like there were lots of people there that were upset that they were like 205 feet away, you know, instead of 200, even though this like impacts them. And I've heard this from multiple people. So like, I've seen other towns where they have signs where they say, you know, like, this property will have this, you know, will have a hearing on this date, you know. Is this something within our purview that we're able to?
Yeah, so I actually was in Pennsylvania to see my sister, and we passed a property that had a small little yard sign notifying those driving by, this is property is subject of a upcoming zoning case, for information, call this number. And I thought that was the most unique thing I had seen because, yeah, not a lot of people are either getting the mail, 250 feet or 200 feet, I guess.
205 feet, I think they said.
Is, it's frustrating because it, but then once you start to widen that radius, then you're sending out...
Exponentially more.
Thousands of letters. So I thought that was a great way to reach a lot of people that maybe don't read the newspaper or are not in that mailing radius. So that is actually something I wanted to see in terms of public noticing.
I've seen those in Westchester. I saw one in Franklin. I saw one in Mason a while ago, so this is a practice.
Or even, I just saw, when I was sitting here, Livery Township had posted about their upcoming zoning commission agenda.
Let me ask you, Claire, isn't that something that's buried in the development code?
No.
The notice requirements are, where are the notice requirements?
It's, it's in chapter 1226, but we are only required to post in the legal newspaper, so mailed and, and...
I know that, but with this study that we're about to do, is this, is this a, this is a subject that could be addressed? Okay.
Okay, yeah. This is an opportunity to see what's working.
Okay.
Just with that, I mean, Townships, they pass, pass Bill 315, which allows them to post these things on social media and other places to satisfy notice requirements. So it's like, Ohio law generally is updated on this.
And that's applicable to a, a city as well?
It's not applicable to the city, but you guys get to choose. So Township's more restricted on what they can do. You have a charter, you can kind of do what you want.
Okay. Yeah, so I just, you know, I heard this is the chance to analyze what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And that was the first thing that like kind of, you know, people actually approached me about this, so.
Yeah.
Cool. Something to consider.
Thank you for making mention of that. I would encourage the rest of the board as well to be listening to those who come in contact with the community, as well as bringing your own ideas based off of our experience and time here. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
We're adjourned.